Join us now for the City of Dillon Council Meeting. Brought to you by Hometown TV, serving Dillon and Marion Counties.
Seven o'clock, I'm just playing a little play of relations and I'll do the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, ununderdogged and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Janet, Father, we give you thanks for this night and this day, the opportunities that we've had to disciple to the people that don't know you, and Lord, we give you thanks for that. Lord, please bless this meeting, keep us in good spirits, keep us with an attitude of congeniality and love. Bless each one on this council, bless each one in this room. We give you thanks for all that you've done for us. Give us discernment as we make decisions that will be on behalf of the people of Dillon. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Can I get approval of the agenda?
I make a motion, approve it, man.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And that is with an executive session in there to discuss land purchase. Okay, approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, January 18th.
Second?
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All right, my report shouldn't be very long one, kind of an update, and I feel like it's probably going to change for a little bit. The vaccines are now available in South Carolina for 65 and older, and that's a moving the right direction. I'm not sure why South Carolina's so far behind North Carolina. They've been doing it for about a month. But the number of cases is down. We have the cases, the deaths are going to lag behind the cases, and we've had a number of deaths in Dillon County, and that's sad. We're moving in the right direction, and there are a number of people that are out there vaccinated. If you have COVID, by the way, about three months before you get a vaccination, and you don't need it honestly, if you have immunity, that's probably pretty good, at least for that three-month period of time. But you can get an exaggerated response to the vaccine if you get that too early. I got called today from Randy Brown at Purdue. Randy's been moved up to a regional person. Randy's been there as the chief person in charge in Dillon for about 12 years, maybe. Just a great guy. He's always answering the call when we ask for things. Just a great guy. But he says there's going to be somebody that's going to be taking over his position here as he continues to oversee a lot of the East Coast operation. However, he did say that they were closing the grain bin in Hayman. He said he didn't think more than four, five people weren't there. This is by no means a show of weakness by Purdue. They were only buying about 3% of their grain from their own people, so it became a, it just became not very profitable. They are still using about 1.9 million gallons a day from our, well, we process 1.9 million gallons a day from the sewage treatment plant. Didn't we guarantee them 2.4 million? We were initially at 2.8, we moved to 2.4.
They gave us back, move 300, 400,000, somewhere.
100,000, 2.8 to 2.4.
You're a graduate guy.
And that was like 12, 15 years ago. That might even be before Hardy came on. But anyway, he understood it to be 2 million, and they've been bumping that pretty close over the last few days, over the last few weeks. They were hitting 1.9 million, 2 million most of last week. I told him that he didn't need to worry about that because I thought our grain was moving forward. He looked it up, called me back, and I think that was with the, with the water side, not sewage side. But I mentioned to him the fact that we were, our long-term plan was to put something on that side of I-95 so that we wouldn't be pumping so much debris from Little Rock to Lakeview or to Little PD River. I told him that the transfer of that, they say they have up to 100,000 a year just in the pre-treatment. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Marty, a lot of the problem is the time that it takes to get from Purdue to that list station right there by the wellness center.
Yes, sir.
And that allows it to accumulate, it's not ammonia, what is it?
Iodine sulfide.
Iodine sulfide, which you can probably spend about two or three seconds in it and it would wipe your lungs out. It's really toxic. So they could save, they could save 100,000 a year. I'm just kind of hopefully setting up maybe some talk with them to, as we go forward looking at our long-term sewage treatment plan. I've noticed in the newspaper we're seeing some drug arrests, and I think that is awesome. I don't know what our party is, whether it's the county, whether it's us, but I think the people of Dillon know Dillon, city Dillon, county Dillon, know there are drugs out there. They know these people, and they're frustrated when they don't see arrests. So I hope we're helping in that, but they need to see arrests. I think the people need, and it's on the front page, and I hope it doesn't affect anybody in the room because it's everywhere, but we need to, we need to do what we can do. It helps them in the long run. I talked with Clay Young, London Gordon, I haven't been out there, but they said that they just had a tremendous capital investment.
Very inspiring.
Yeah, so that's good. I need from each, and I talked with Glenn about it before his thing this week, and I've just called him, thank, because of HIPAA, but we're glad he's good. But I need a report from each of y'all, how what we did last year. The paper wants a state of Dillon, and I'd like to include in that your, what you've done this year over the last 12 months, what your plans are for the next 12 months and long term. I hope I'm not out of bounds in saying this. The golf course is doing well. We're, it is making more money. Yesterday, they had a tremendous show for their golf tournament. A week or 10 days ago, Robert announced that he was going to give the golf course in some fashion to the city. And, you know, that's, that's tremendous. That allows us to possibly apply for grants. It'll save us $3,000, 2,500 or 3,000 a month on lease payment?
2,500.
2,500, so probably about 30,000 if you're there. I noticed that Glenn had proposed, and we've talked about buying this land on the other side of the river. This would, I think, make it so that we would have both sides of the river with the land that he's already given us, an opportunity to possibly put some different things that I think Glenn's going to talk about today, possibly a path from Wellness Center out to the golf course. So just a, just a lot of good things happening at a time when things could be worse. Anyway, that's about me. I put on your table the information that we, I could follow up briefly, our last council meeting, last month purchased and still continue to have issues with the commercial front leather garbage truck. That's the truck that goes around and picks up the big cream dumpsters at different commercial businesses. And just sitting around that day prior to the council meeting, talking about our issues with it and what it was going to cost to buy a new one if you wanted to buy a new one, which we've got some quotes there, anywhere from 260 to 275,000 dollars for one of those trucks. But when we're looking at those numbers, I'm going, is it really worth for us to be in the commercial garbage business? What does it, what does it bring to us? We know the garbage business brings revenue to us, and we spend very little towards that and kind of offsets some of our costs in the general fund. So I had Janet to pull some numbers, and I was surprisingly shocked what those numbers turned out to be. So, you know, I was preparing myself to come to you guys tonight and say, hey, let's get out of the commercial business because, you know, we're only making $60,000 a year off of that one particular garbage. But as you see there, and this is based off the ending year of June 20th, June 2020, when you take the, what we spend in the commercial business, that's the landfill costs, the employee costs, fuel, etc., that we've got listed here, versus the revenue we bring in for 250 dumpsters, I don't think we need to get out of the commercial business when we're making 377,000 dollars off of it. The only thing that I would add to that is maybe as part of the budget, putting in 50, 60,000 dollars a year to, in depreciation to replace it, because it is about every five to seven years that we have to replace it.
Yeah, somewhere in that ball.
And now, honestly, we need to get our new one fixed and put it on the back burner and buy a new one.
And we're working on getting some things. I think we still have hydraulic issues.
Yes, sir.
We talked with the guy locally, and they've done some work, but we still, they're chasing some things.
Is computer part?
It pretty much is, yes. Pretty much is. And then we talk about depreciation fund a lot on the water, sewage side. And we have a depreciation fund and general fund, and you should see that each month. And I'll, Janet will go over the financial issues, but right now, in the general fund depreciation account, we have right at 800,000 dollars. Now, we also use that money during our slow period and then, you know, pick it back up.
But you also have it out 90 days in the cash account, correct?
Well, that's part of that.
You've got, gotten about 900,000.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, yes.
You've got a depreciation account and a regular cash.
That's correct, yes. That is correct. So the thing about the garbage truck is, just as the last one we purchased for residential, we have to order it so far in advance. And we have to write a letter or something, what we did the last time, saying, hey, you know, we want this, but we can't get it built July or after, because it just don't sit on the, on the ground.
It'd be built.
Yes, it has to be built from ground up. That is correct. So is that something you want us to do?
You need that in a motion.
Well, I just need the legislature to say that we can go ahead and send a letter telling these folks that our plan is to need to purchase from them. I think the first order will be or anything like that will be a.
I think the simplest way is an up and down vote.
Well, let me give you what the, what costs are today. And these are from two different companies. One is the Amic Equipment, which we have bought a lot of things from those folks. Their cost is 257,254 dollars. Carolina Environmental Systems, the cost is 279,000, so roughly $20,000 more.
Which one we got the best service out of them?
Well, they don't know if we bought anything from Carolina. We didn't have their bothering thing.
That's who the county bought their last one from.
Carolina?
Yes, sir.
And Amic is who we buy most of our trash trucks from.
At least Mack.
One is a.
Mack truck, that's Mack.
Is a Mack's cab and chassis. And the other is a, is it Mammoth?
That's the body.
That's the body.
I do believe that. You have to buy a chassis in it.
Chassis.
The chassis is a Mack. The chassis, both of them are Mack. That is correct.
You have any direction on this?
We just, you know, we really don't have a reliable spare truck. We go down.
No, 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 we're going to do a truck. We want to know what, which one.
Well, I think they're pretty much the same truck. It's just a different body. And the bodies, you know, they, I like dealing with Amic.
They're closer to the other ones in the green one, they're in plum gear.
You have to take them to the dealer quite often, the electrical problem, everything like that.
What kind of warranty comes with it?
One-year warranty.
Yeah.
That's basically it.
You buy, you buy that kind of equipment, they can do one year on.
Did you, did you talk to the shop over here that can do fleet work on that equipment?
Well, it can, it can.
It can do it up to warranty. You can have, they come with extended warranty.
I don't know if it says or not, Johnny. You might, I have.
And we can look and see if there's an extension, I mean, extended warranty.
What's the warranty on that thing?
One year.
That's it? That's all it can give you on that guy. It's a commercial vehicle.
You see what kind of environment that thing works in.
Yeah.
Well, not just the environment, I mean, again, environment, but, you know, we find, I hate to say it, we rat. That's why we have to keep, you know, try to keep rats out of these pieces of equipment.
Well, that's common, I mean.
Yeah, because when you go dump a dumpster, you have rats in dumpster.
They eat your wires.
Yeah.
I don't agree with you.
Can you give the beat one more time?
Yes. The quote right now is from Amic, 257,253,97, and from Carolina Environmental is 269,300. Now, the difference in the two, I will say, is Amic is a 2021 model, and the one from Carolina Environmental is a 2022 model.
Can I say something?
Sure.
And that quote may change this guy, what Glenn said, the quote that Amic gave is a 2021. So if we wait till July, it may.
It may have to be a 2022.
Yeah, whatever they got there.
Then you'll have the price.
But we'll budget at that time in our budget, what that will be, because it won't be, that will be either depreciation.
It's going to be cheaper for you to buy them.
The, the.
By the time you go all the way to Greenfield, your time, going back and forth, that's a long ride.
The backup truck is.
It's the basic jump.
Our backup truck is our original truck.
The backup truck.
It's been 16 years since.
It's the 2005 backup.
All right, so it's 15.
No, it's not the original. I think we got the garbage.
998, 998, 99 in the 2005.
It was like 98.
But it's, so we can just send them a letter, say, hey, put us on the list.
I still think we ought to have a.
Then is any way we can broaden our commercial revenue on dumpsters? Can we broaden our horizons on dumpsters? We got all we got.
Can you find out if there's an extended warranty?
I will, I will. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, Senator. Well, this was just to put us in the process to say, hey, put us on the list. When it comes to the financing or the actual cost, they'll send that back to us. That'll be a part of our budget process.
And where would you get the money from, Glenn?
Well, we'll probably, and we'll just use these quotes here, we won't pay it 250-some odd dollars straight out of our pocket.
Right.
We'll either use a depreciation account and or borrow from the bank, you know, and do a, I'm assuming a five-year loan note. The last truck that we bought, garbage truck we bought, what was a year or two ago, we spent, what, 55,000 a year over five years? So roughly the same kind of cost, if I remember the surgery.
Well, it's one of those things where you, you need to acknowledge that you're going to spend 55,000, 50, 55,000 dollars a year to replace that. So that is how we figured into the budget. Now, we can either do that to ourselves in loan, or we can do it with the bank, and they make 1% or 2%, 3% on it, whatever they make. And that's why we want to have that appreciation fund. If we can finance ourselves and discipline ourselves to replace that.
And we've done that in the past.
Yeah, we have.
We've done some depreciation money in there.
Janet makes us.
Then we put money aside each year to go back in and borrow from ourselves. It's okay. There were discussions, and by the way, Janet was also bringing up the 16th payment for Wellness Center loan was paid the end of January.
2016.
And she called, is Wells Park over here this week?
Oh, no.
Big B and T. Big B and T, to follow up about extra payment. They will not allow us to make an extra payment. We can pay it all off at one time or continue our schedule of one C D. They would not allow us to make an extra payment on that. COVID, Dr. Wallace brought up some, some things on COVID. We posted some things on Facebook. I think Dillon Herald has had some things on about some sites or vaccinations where they take place. Today was one of, one of the sites here at Wellness Center for first dose that was provided by DHEC. I want to think, and I could be wrong, was it 400 doses they did today or not?
400 doses.
Now, two or three weeks ago, they did a first dose here, DHEC did, and they only did like less than 100.
Did they call and let us know that they had doses? See, that's what the hospital does. When they've got, when they see they're not going to make their quota, they call us, and we get on the phone.
Well, I know these things today were about planted on. In fact, I think somebody told me that we picked it from Little Park State here, so they're coming from everywhere.
Well, I'm sending all that to Lumber.
They're coming from everywhere. This was a first dose. A second dose is scheduled from the January 1st dose to 24th of February. Today's second dose is scheduled for March to April, DHEC out here. Now.
Five to three weeks, Paterna.
The five products.
I think they're doing.
Macerna is four weeks, yeah.
McLeod had reached out to me a week or two ago about scheduling dates out here, and I think they've got one date in February and one date in March. Now, I don't know how, if there's a packing or not, they just, it was a date, so we gave two dates. Again, today, I mean, it was, I drove out here after lunch, and they were running through every week. There were discussions that DHEC had, the DHEC person that I've talked to about our site, told me a week or so ago, they're looking at a dry throw recycler. And whether that happens, and they're looking at doing 2,000 to 4,000 in one day, dry throw recycler, which I told them that we couldn't handle it either. So they're looking at another location they think that would be going to work, and whether they do it or not, I don't know when that will happen. As soon as I know something, I'll let you know. But I do know you still have to go through to Carolina through DHEC, anything that DHEC's doing, I guess, or you can go online and look, see. I looked today, I had a gentleman in my office wanting to know if I had to pull where he could get his shot, did that it?
There's no.
I told him, I, there was a 90 degree forward. So I pulled up the website, he said, that's useless. I said, I agree. I said, here's the telephone number. He said, you don't talk to anybody. So, I mean, we've probably all heard these same stories about that. I know Caris South came out and said they were going to start providing, and whether they have it at this point in time, I don't know. The only one that is showing up on the DHEC vaccine locator slides is Dillon County Medicine. But the last time I looked today, I didn't check to see for sure. Last time I looked, they were not giving me that at that time.
Dr. Wallace, how many of y'all administer at your office?
None. Can't get it, can't get it. Why? I have no clue. And you can't find anybody that can tell. I, I mean, we have, we've been approved as a site, and I've got the oldest population. I mean, I don't see P. I mean, we got old people, and I cannot get it. I don't, I don't know.
So Glenn, when you start to ramp up.
I voted 1,000.
Will you be talking to him?
Just say it.
The only time that I've talked to a point person is when they want to use this facility. That's, that's pretty much.
I'm just trying to figure out the advertising when you start to ramp up with the city of Dillon.
Well, I think what they've done, just to follow up with Dr. Wallace, if you didn't know, I have emergency, what do you call that?
App. That could be on Tuesday. So I kind of looped a little bit, but I do remember getting.
Literally out of the loop.
That Tina probably sent me, or somebody sent me, that came from Emergency Management, you know, with certain information to put out for advertising. Based on what I've seen so far, and I should, I'm going to say what I have to say here, it may bite us in the foot. DHEC has been very much throwing stuff out there. You know, again, everything's appointment based. You can't call the local DHEC office and make an appointment, mind you.
It's very confusing.
It is very confusing.
I mean, my.
Especially for the elderly.
Yeah, my appointment was not with McLeod, that's where I got mine. Mine was with CDC. I mean, it's, and that's, that's part of the whole, the whole problem. If, and I think now, I think pretty soon the pharmacies can get it.
Well, there's discussions about, you know, CPS and Walgreens.
Did Nicholas talk with the, did Nicholas come in?
Yeah, he spoke to the police.
Good, appreciate it.
And, you know, don't know that we had anybody to change their mind, but, you know, it was there for them.
Well, let me just say this. If you want your life back, get vaccinated, because until we get, until we get everybody vaccinated, it's, it's just not going to happen.
Well, that was one of my biggest fears being in the hospital on Tuesday was, I hope I don't have it, I hope I don't leave with it.
Right.
Even though I was there for a short period of time. But the more I hear on, on dates and process, I try to, we try to put it out on Facebook and let you guys know. So, because I know you've been calling about it, whether it's your family members, your neighbors, or somebody that.
Right now, if you're under 65, it is very difficult to get a shot unless you're a first responder.
Or caregiver or an elder.
So it's a lot of, lot of.
And then for the, from a city standpoint, we've been fortunate that we haven't had a large group of people who have tested positive at one time. However, and with Burke, here in the last two to three weeks, it seemed like he's had two, three, four go out. I think you've got three, maybe four scheduled to come back this week.
Four out by now, is it?
So, you know, it's kind of slowed down some of the process. Police Department may have one, two, or three here and there on different shifts. You haven't been hurt to the point where you had more than one-on-one shift, have you?
Well, today hit that.
Okay. So you, we try to educate our people as much as possible to take the precautions. Super Bowl was yesterday, so what people do yesterday?
Together.
Got together. So hopefully, we won't see a spike, but I, I feel like we may see some spike in that here in the next week or two, and then maybe it will, you know, just trend down.
But if we can get our population immunized, the saint's gone by some. But it, and the people that, you know, right now, they don't need to take it, but the people that are resisting, and the very people that are going to keep that thing alive, and they, we need to.
The crowd is going to be the tough ones to do. Here's what it is, as I told media.
It's going to be down at that beach, going to buy the shots and all that stuff.
If they walk in now and tell me to roll up my sleeve, I'd roll up my sleeve. If I got to think about it, I just don't know. But that's where we are on, on COVID at this point in time. Benny's office, they did a listing of. Benny's office, it did a list in, uh, twelve, twelve single-family dwellings to be demolished back in December. And you got the utilities such as Duke Energy and what I'm gonna call Sevignol Extra Gas. If they had anything on those houses, go ahead and remove them, uh, from those unsafe structures. Burke's crowd has started on it, but had stopped since we had four out of there, uh, to test positives. But right now, we've got twelve single-family dwellings that are scheduled to be demolished right now. Of those twelve, two have been completed. Hopefully, starting next week, we can get back on those. Um, we've got one listed on East Cleveland Street. There was one on South Fourth Avenue that has been completed. South Fifth Avenue, North Fifth Avenue, Mark Richard King, West Roosevelt Street, West Calhoun Street, Buford, East Street, Owen and Walnut Street are scheduled, and then there was one on West Hudson Street that has been completed. So if someone calls you about demolition, we're in the process. And hopefully, we get our folks back to work next week to, to get that going again. Um, with that, the way that works is that if a single-family dwelling is condemned, you know, their, their son of a letter saying it's condemned, they have sixty, ninety days to bring it back to code. If they don't bring it back to code, you know, we can demolish it. Um, we have in our ordinance that they can hire an outside vendor to come and do it, or they can hire us to do it. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, they hire us to do it. We charge whatever the landfill cost is, and that twenty-nine dollars a ton?
Twenty.
Twenty-eight dollars a ton that we have to pay the landfill, Dillon County. And then we're charging fifteen percent on top of that. Benny and I were talking, we, last week, week before last, that maybe we need to, to increase our costs.
What's your average turnover for that?
To tear them back?
What?
Take two days?
Well, it depends on the size of the house, of course, but normally it's two to three days. Okay, how many employees do you have there?
Normally it takes about three.
Three employees, twenty an hour, you know, you've got.
Where you got two pieces of heavy equipment?
Well, I, I know, I'm just starting with that, twenty-four, twenty, it's, you know, you got.
We're lucky we're breaking even.
You got, you got easily a thousand bucks in your, in your labor.
Well, my, my thoughts and Benny's thoughts were, again, it's, it's like anything else that we do. I wouldn't say fifty percent, I don't know the number, how many are outstanding. But, you know, after so many months, if they don't pay us, we turn it back over as a lien on the taxes. And, and we get it back that way. Truthfully, the party says we need to get out of that business, or make it where they will go out and get somebody else to do it.
Yeah, we need to have some control over that, because if they run into a problem, then they're gonna quit coming and do a demolition, and then we're.
Oh, if they don't pay them, yeah.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah. Agreed.
But they don't have the recourse to go after their taxes, we do.
So, again, I think fifteen percent is, is pretty cheap.
Yeah. Well, there's a reason why they choose us.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I would look at that cost.
And just increase it.
Well, that's. Well, I look at that cost and, and, you know, um, I, I mean, we don't need to make a lot of money, but we certainly don't need to lose money on it.
My thoughts were, whatever the landfill cost, plus fifty percent of that.
Yeah, well, in, in a, you know, most of the time, your materials are half of your total cost. Your materi, your labor cost is about your materials cost if you go build something. So I think you're, you're easily there, but you also, like I say, you have the cost of the heavy equipment, tires and stuff like that.
I think when you do a flat fee, you save a thousand dollar fee or something.
What would a outside contractor, what, the, the West Hudson you just cleaned up, what would they charge you there?
West Hudson.
So you're saving seven fifty?
One.
It, it's gonna make more than, way more than what we're doing for.
Well, that's why.
Most of the time, you got excavators, it's a hundred dollars an hour. Sometimes, most times.
We can't give competitive prices for outside contractors.
So the excavator and the.
Yeah.
So. We run an excavator for two days at least.
Yeah, you're gonna burn sixty, seventy gallons of fuel. You get a flat tire and landfill, you cut the tires, three hundred some bucks.
Yeah.
So you, you know, this is.
So you're talking about just the person who run the excavator and excavator and, and then his.
I mean, not, when we have sixteen hundred. We turned around and thirty-five hundred dollars, but the one was on Fourth Avenue, we made five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we really lost money.
Yeah, so right now, you're at fifteen percent.
Right now.
So if it's thousand, you're at, you're eleven fifty on return, and you're proposing fifty percent of the landfill charge.
I like getting that down.
So if you're a thousand, you're at fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's a good mark.
And that's still a deal.
I think we do.
And again, there's a. A lot of times, we have to haul dirt back in, get a house, and take it out, and go.
Wouldn't it be better if you talked about the landfill cost, or is that a problem? Cause if you kept it a thousand, you got five thousand in it.
Well, I don't want to cap it.
That's true.
I just do fifty percent of the landfill cost.
Cause, you know, some of them.
Are your cost.
I don't know that vast majority of Burton know that, you know, it's not a lot of tons when you're talking about a wooden house.
Most, our average house, the week during out, I would say is around twenty-five hundred dollars. Cause most of them are not shopping in top level, you know, that's, that's probably the average. Every now and then you run into one like we did the other day, there was a block house that, you know, weighed, we hauled about a hundred and twenty tons.
But once you make it a minimum thousand and fifty percent above, no less than a thousand.
Well, you say whatever the landfill cost, plus fifty percent?
Yeah.
I mean.
Well, then just do it.
Look at, look at our seventy-five, listen to this. On that, you say, how much, how much did you spend on that last one? You said twenty-five?
It, it was a hundred and twenty-two, it was about thirty-five hundred dollars. Took, it was three thousand, it's thirty-five hundred, about five hundred.
And it took how many days?
It took about three days.
Three days, so you're talking about twenty-four hundred dollars, you're talking about basically, right? Eight hundred dollars a day for just the excavator and the, and the guy running it, but you got two other people, right? I mean, we don't need to lose money on this.
Well, it's kind of like, Glenn, I like fifty percent of it.
You think fifty percent would get us close?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well.
Glenn, let me ask you a question. What do we have in place as far as when a house burns, that the homeowner has to clean up the property? Do, like, within ninety days? If they don't, can we not start filing?
Well, that goes back to, to, at that point in time, it's condemned.
Okay.
And then it's whatever that condemned process is, um.
Well, wouldn't you say two years is really?
Yeah, too long, yeah, too long, too long. And, and a lot of that problem is reaching out, making sure, and Jack probably can answer better than I, the, you know, who we send notifications to, multiple, so it can be multiple, then advertising and things.
It'll be more, more.
And maybe a mortgage company.
Yeah.
But there's got to be some kind of timeframe there, though.
It is, and we, we're stretching it far, I think. I agree with you there. But Benny and I also have looked at some ordinance in other towns, and I'll tell you, you could be on this one. Mayor Link, Matthew Elvis and I have been talking, he found something and shared it with me, that there's some things that other people are doing on abandoned or condemned property that we're looking to see something, some of the things that we may be able to adopt as well to kind of tighten up our thing.
Do we need to go back and look at our ordinance that we have in place now?
Yeah, that's what we're working on, then the date before planning is on, and then it comes to you guys. Um, but yeah, those need to be tightened up and, and made quicker. But, but on the other side of that, we try to do demolition this time of the year cause it's slower stuff than what Burton's got going on. This is a slow time of the year, but we try to do those during the winter months to get that done.
But it almost seems like at thirty-five hundred and seventeen fifty, and you got eight hundred and two days, you're still just basically breaking even at fifty percent. Aren't you just breaking even at fifty percent?
It's kind of like we all got talked about, we kind of make the community better too. You know, we don't, we wanna get it done, but we don't wanna lose money.
But should you have a minimum on the back end, that less than a thousand? Because if you don't.
That's the opposite side.
Well, another thing is, are we still under that one house, one block, one year?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, we can do, again, we can do something different there if we pay the money to have asbestos studies and all, you know. Again, I didn't bring it with me. I don't know if it's that costly, but if there is asbestos, we can't care about that.
Right.
Cause we're not, if we get a study on, cause we're not certified. So we kind of follow D H E C's lead, that they can, as long as we do one per block per year.
They're messing with us.
Yeah. Um.
We didn't make a motion.
No, I would just, we'll bring that back, that was just for information only. I think that's, well, I had it right this morning.
Okay.
Uh, Dan?
I'm in.
Can I ask a quick question before you start? This item for that waste water treatment, was that an unexpected cost of?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
General fund, we buy one, one being seven hundred, same type of bathroom, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. But your general fund operation is appreciated. Our revenue is divided into three million, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars in twenty twenty-one. In nineteen twenty, it was two thou, two million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, which is a difference of three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars more in twenty twenty-one.
He talks last time, if money came in in July.
It is, as I like watching money and taxes and stuff.
About where we were last.
Right, and then the expenses was three million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars in twenty twenty-one. And then in twenty, it was three million, eight hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. That's a hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and twenty more in twenty twenty than in the first. Order and sewer, we have a million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars in non-restricted funds. In restricted funds, we have two million, eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-two dollars in restricted, which brings the total to three million, six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. In our revenues versus twenty twenty-one and twenty, we were, were twenty-seven thousand and ninety-two dollars more last year than we are in our current.
Just a, just a note, um, in, in talking with the dude today, they said that they were still operating at about eighty-five percent. They, and, and a lot of it gets cut in demand because of restaurants, but also, uh, the ability to keep people, you know, on the job.
Our expenses was two million, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-five dollars in our current year. In twenty, it was two million, two hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is a difference of ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars more in twenty than it is in current. That is due to some repairs on pumps and equipment in last, the last Friday, is reasonable for. Stroll morgue, our cash account speaks seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. Our revenue for twenty-one is eighty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. In twenty, it was eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars, a difference of three thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars more in twenty-one than in twenty. Our expenses in twenty-one is one eighty-nine, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And in twenty, it was seventy thousand, seventy-six dollars, a difference of a hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, some of that is the engineering cost on that payment. Is that again?
On the water.
Yeah.
I mean, on stormwater.
Stormwater study.
That was outside.
That, we'll be getting.
Well, we haven't got a brief, uh.
No, our local was sixty thousand, and federal was an international.
Yeah. And we, we've been, we've been awarded. No, we're waiting on to be awarded the sixty thousand match. They have not awarded it yet.
The golf course, our cash account's nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Our revenues for twenty-one is a hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. In twenty, it was a hundred and one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, which is forty-six thousand, a hundred and nine dollars more in twenty-one than it was in twenty twenty. We transferred seventy-five thousand today in our, in our current year, which last year this time, we had transferred a hundred and five thousand. Our expenses in current twenty-one is two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars. In the twenty, it was two hundred and fifteen thousand, a hundred and eight dollars, forty-five thousand, two hundred and nine dollars more in our current year, twenty-one. And that's due to, well, we set on all of the equipment, you know, the more.
That pump is thirty-six thousand.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that pump like thirty-six thousand in twenty, then?
Glenn, under the Wellness Center, have you still got Todd under the Wellness Center?
I can't remember, is he there or gone?
I think he's done.
Wellness.
Should he go to the golf course?
Yeah.
Okay, and then in our two percent hospitality funds, we got nine hundred and forty thousand and ten dollars in there. And that's due to, we just made a payment of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars in January, first, end of January, which that, when it says that loses four years, we'll have it completed. Um, our revenue is three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. In twenty-one, it was three hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight in twenty, which were a difference of nineteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. Our average monthly revenue is about fifty-three thousand, nine hundred and dollars for the new.
I need to follow up with that. I've had a conversation, Benny's had a conversation with Matt, here at Lucian Star, doing renovations, uh, focusing on this long, with that reason. I've had either open or student renovations. They're not hearing the building down, they're just gonna redo the building as they're told. They're one of our biggest producing as far as hospitality tax goes, and they've been closing down six years. And we made twenty thousand more.
Yeah.
I, I wonder about the Starbucks, it's gonna affect that, it's us. I'll have a cup of coffee. All right. Thank you.
Don Strickland, he talks on PD Regional Transportation Authority.
What do they recover, Don? So like.
I'm here, the.
Yes, yeah. You got, you got something on hand, Eddie?
Yes.
Should I stand right here?
Yeah, wherever you like.
I got one minute.
Thank you, Councilor Lombe, to come and give you enough data on kind of where we're at. Um, spoke to you a few times this past year, um, just about the plans and kind of what we're facing and, uh, what we had moving forward with. This is, uh, the schedule that, most current schedule kind of talks about the services that we've had. We actually have already, um, added additional services for Harbor Freight, started a couple of weeks ago, and, um, there's some more growth coming in the very near future, but this is kind of where we're at now. So I'm just gonna run through a, a quick list to give you an idea, but, um, we're just, uh, just over four months now, but we've had, um, three thousand, two hundred and fifty trips just in the city of Dillon since we started, and keep in mind that all of this is during Covid. We've, um, across the board in all six counties, we're seeing about, we've had about a forty percent reduction in ownership. So we're offering about sixty percent, so this number would be much bigger than it already is. And I think it's not bad based on where we're at, just getting started, you know, in the middle of Covid, but, um, so thirty-two hundred and fifty trips just in the city of Dillon. Um, we've had growth in all services in four or five months. But February, just that first week, is actually looking better, and a lot of that's gotta do with something else I'll share in just a minute, but, um, had a hundred and twenty-eight trips in Hamer, uh, fifty trips coming toward Dillon, to Dillon from Little Rock, fifty-nine trips from Lada on our Connect service, um, and all those, that's Monday to Friday, and it's on the schedule there. One of the biggest things is starting to take off now is demand response, and we're seeing a lot more of this, but that's going to their house. Um, picking them up basically from the front door and taking them to appointments, and we've had a hundred and eighty two of those, um, just as we started a few months ago. And that's really going to increase, and that's something we, we have to budget for because it's a more expensive type of service. But what we're finding is a lot of the folks are seniors, a lot of them, they can't get to a bus stop, so we have to provide a service to go to the house and get them. A lot of those are in the cloud and in CareSouth, um, they're going to appointments, some of them going to buy groceries, but we don't have an option to go get them, that's part of our requirement is, anywhere we provide a picture out service, we have to go to those who can't get on the bus on the normal route, so we go pick those folks up. I really see that kind of increasing and taking off, um, in, in the coming months, especially, you know, more people are vaccinated, the better the numbers are. People are going to feel more comfortable getting out, and I think that's what we'll see. Um, I mean, it's the Harbor Freight piece we just started, uh, which is focusing, starting out just in Dillon County. The plan there, and what Harbor Freight wants is us for a field to connect to Florence, they have more and more folks than we have folks calling from Florence trying to get to Harbor Freight, uh, Marion County Harbor Freight and Marlborough County Harbor Freight, and all of that, we have planned to roll into place this year, um, and the need is, is growing. Um, Dr. Wallace, you mentioned Wyman and Purdue, it sounds like I need to visit those folks again, we haven't been talking in a while. Harbor Freight came to the table with a local supporter, so we're going to focus more on them, but I will speak with, um, with Wyman and Purdue this week to see what, what we can do to help them now. Um, I did talk to a few folks at Purdue, there, there's an advance coming up pretty soon, a job there, so we're being, we're going to be a part of that and see if we can't, um, get some more folks to work. One other thing I wanted to share is, uh, we mentioned the COVID, uh, we have partnered with, um, the CareSouth, the CareFirst Foundation, and, um, we're transporting folks to go get vaccines. I think CareSouth did four hundred or eight hundred last Wednesday and Friday in Lada, and I think they're going to be back there this, this week, I believe it's Wednesday and Friday, and folks from Dillon, we're bringing folks from Dillon to Lada to get them vaccinated. So that's been very good, um, we had one situation where wheelchair lift, uh, wasn't operated properly, so we had to manually deploy that, which luckily, Mr. McFoy, he's been driving for us for twenty two years, I believe, he was able to take care of that issue without a problem. Um, so things are certainly heading in the right direction, we have a lot of, um, additional growth needed. The city, you know, the city itself is seeing, to be honest, probably eighty percent of the ridership, a lot of folks are coming from the rural areas into Dillon to do things. And, um, as I mentioned last year, we came to council and basically requested about, I think it was ten thousand dollars in operating funds to help us, um, this service, where we're sitting right now is, I believe, three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and, um, we were looking for ten thousand local commitment, and then two thousand for bus stop placement. Um, I shared that around six months, we start looking at actually properly putting in bus stops, so it won't be too long before we are, you know, trying to go through the designer review board and, and looking at bus stop locations and kind of where it's needed and where the ridership is. Um, obviously, as I shared before, Walmart's a big part of this, haven't been able to, to work that out to get them to be a local supporter, but in my opinion, they should be, if they can be. Uh, we're looking to go through a distribution center to see if we can maybe work something out on that end because the local stores are sometimes difficult. But, um, I'm just, you know, here to, to give an update, answer any questions, and I hope that the city will consider, um, being, you know, a partner and local stakeholder in this thing. I know that from many conversations, I do get that question, you know, kind of giving us a rundown of, of who's currently supporting this service, and, um, I just hope that that's something we can, we can work through and look to continue growing over the. Answer any questions.
Mr. Strickland, when you were here the last time, you said you were going to go out and try to secure some more dollars. Did, did you, were you able to do that? Do you have the money by you of what you secured?
We're, we're still, we're still short, we've got about twelve stakeholders now for the service. Um, as far as we're, what we're currently running, the funds are there, um, but, um, you know, with the growth, additional, additional demand response, I'm talking about with folks needing to come to Dillon, whether it's McCloud or, or CareSouth, wherever, those, that's the service that kind of is expensive, so for us to be able to, be able to continue growing that and bring those folks to their appointments, um, the costs is, will be more, and, you know, the goal is for us to be able to continue supporting it. We have a lot of supporters from McCloud Hospital, um, Trinity Behavioral, CareSouth, Dillon County, uh, Harbor Freight, um, there's, there's quite a few.
When you say permanent markers, when you say permanent markers, um, like in Florence, you've got, I guess, is that what you call a permanent marker?
Yes.
There's maybe one of the stops there?
Yeah.
Okay, because there's some of the stops you got on this map that we don't have a D C A sign for?
Yeah, yeah, the problem with that is, we start out with, uh, y'all all know what the politician type signs look like, so we start out with, and the problem is, is anytime somebody comes to our address, those things, they get replaced, and we try to go out and replace them, we don't have nearly enough. We, we probably spent, uh, close to a thousand dollars putting those things out, so a lot of folks, they see the route, they downloaded the app that we have, so they can kind of know where the bus runs. But, um, the bus stops is really one thing that makes a big difference because it's something they can visually see, and on the bus stop itself, it has that information you're looking at, so that it'll actually say, there'll be a, a point, like it may be point seventeen, they know exactly what time the bus will be there, so if they don't have a smartphone, that's an option for.
How would, uh, somebody that, that can't get out, like you said, you had one morning by the office to pick him up, do they, do they get in touch with y'all for that?
Yes, sir, so on there, it talks about demand response, they call us, um, before six P M. today, and if you have a nine o'clock appointment tomorrow morning, we're going to take care of you. So you just, it's.
That's good, because right now it's three days for them.
Yeah, Medicaid, yes, sir, if there were logistic care and they, and they're not feeling well, and they want to go to the doctor today, they'll get there Thursday. And that, this is a service that, when, I said we had a hundred and eighty two, as of Jaro, it's been the past two months as people are starting to learn about it. So I think that's going to continue to grow, and most of those are senior citizens, they're working with Vantage One, which is a part of CareSouth, um, with that program, but, um, you know, this, this is not, it's something that's going to continually be tweaked and grow, and, um, we just want to make sure that, um, you know, we've kind of pulled in the right stakeholders to be able to make sure we can sustain it. For what we're going through, what we're facing with the COVID situation, um, I'm not disappointed in where we're at, I know that we probably looking closer to ten thousand trips right now, but wasn't for COVID. Um, after the new year, we saw a slight drop because of, you know, people knew that with the holidays, there, there are more risk to get out there, use the service, but, the Federal Trans Administration's put, pushed down a mandatory mask requirement, so we're giving away masks to any passengers on the bus that don't have one, we actually provide them a mask, and then we're requiring, requiring everybody on the bus to wear a mask.
That's a good idea, it's like that.
We have a product called Bio Oxide that we're disinfecting, it's basically, it works like a fogger, we disinfect every bus, um, in our entire system and administration, that's an expensive, undertaking, but luckily we have some federal funds to help us out with that. It's a medical grade, it's actually a food grade, um, certified product that we're able to be using, that you don't have to wait a long time before you can get back on the bus.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Only thing I want to say is to please, if that's okay, um, we work with police departments in, in other, other areas, one thing that, that we do have on our entire fleet is six to eight cameras that have audio and video, so at any point, you come across something, you think a bus camera may be able to help you, it's all right, I'm glad we'll get you that video.
Correct.
I go, do, note that.
Yeah. And, and that, understand, we didn't do anything.
No, we didn't do anything.
Y'all wanted to say that. We're going to do ten over three years for some reason. Of course, I thought we were going to finance those cars.
We didn't, I think y'all wanted to kind of wait and see what it was going to do and.
Yeah. Well, this, this is a, I think it's a great thing, you see them all the time, and, uh, uh, certainly, we're in a underserved area that people, I, I mean, they, they, it's sad when you have to pay a family member to drive you somewhere, and it isn't cheap, um, so.
What'd you say the county did? Do you remember what it did?
They're doing thirty six thousand a year. Over three years, it's, it's four, it's a three-year commitment, thirty six thousand a year, so a hundred and eight thousand. And we were going to do roughly thirty three or thirty six thousand over that same time period. Yes, it was actually just, um, thirty two, so it had been ten thousand for three years, and we were just asking for two thousand to help with the bus stop that dropped this year.
We need to make sure we put that entire discussion when we go to budget.
We will do.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Um, citizens report, anybody want to talk?
Um, I'd just like to say that on behalf of D C A, Dillon Community Alliance, we're planning to start up our, um, First Fridays at the Fountain again, starting in May. We will have the concert, and we're gonna, um, try to get some food vendors, food trucks, just in that little area there. Um, we decide, I think they had previously been like six to eight, but some people have said, one, we can't get the outside traffic in here at six, if people work jobs, you know, they can't get here by six o'clock, so we, that's the whole point of this. We want to encourage people to come from outside of the city as well, um, so we decided to do it from seven to nine, and the longer it gets in the summer, it's really hot at six o'clock. So that's why we decided seven to nine, but I can tell you, I'm not going to tell you who it is, but we already have one great band lined up for you, so, um, we're, we're working on that, and, um, hopefully it will be at least as successful as it has been in the past, barring whatever COVID is going to do.
Hopefully, we can plan on that. Anyone else? Um, old business ordinance number twenty one dash zero one, annexation of Robert D Miller property, seventeen to twenty seven, Lada Court. Um, this is second reading, and then can we just tie in seventeen thirty one, Lada Court is, is owned by twenty one oh two?
Yes, correct.
Owned by the same, same person. Any other motions?
I'll make a motion.
I second.
All those in favor? Uh, new business ordinance number twenty one dash oh three, annexation of East Coast Housing, King property, Southeast, uh, intersection highway, real on south. This is about side, three oh one, south going towards Lada, that crosses from, um, the past department of motor vehicles on the left. One, the first ones on the left are already in the city, mobile home park, this is a newer one that's being redone.
That's city.
Yes, somehow the other years ago, the city was annexed out there, I'm not, that was part of my time, but, um, mobile home park, one is the city name, and then this one is going to be located right beside, they like.
Can we have some discussion on this?
Sure.
Um, I'd like to bring you in on this, this, um, discussion too, David. Um, this is a, my mobile home park that's going to probably end up letting migrants and stuff like that, you know, um, there's about ten or twelve trailers out there right now, and my question is, this way out from the outside of the city limits, um, I just want to get your perspective, how you feel about it, you get a lot of calls out there?
We get a fair amount of calls at other, other home parks, because we're already serving some, other, other home parks, I mean, it's not, I mean, we don't get one every day, but, I mean, they'll probably end up, maybe one a week.
So the police, do they go out two at a time to go out here, just one, and something happens, they got to call for backup, it's a mile and a half, two miles out to city limits? Um, you know, I just want to get your take on how you feel about it, you think it should be annexed into the city?
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't know that I have to know, but.
Well, I know you don't, I just want to hear.
I mean.
I don't think it's personally a good thing to annex.
It looks like it's going to be kind of, I mean, I'm going to have.
Yeah, it's about an old truck.
Yeah, a brand new truck, and I'm hoping it's going to be something nice, and hopefully we won't have to go out there, but I'm going to decide to annex it.
But the same folks don't, they're doing that trade park, doing one, how they about, uh, behind.
Dylan Yawn.
Behind Dylan Yawn, yeah.
Yeah, and those, those folk kind of, and that, that might, they, they make good money doing that, so there's ain't anybody going to move out there, I don't think.
Yeah, the one that they've done, like you said, what we used to call self trade park, they took out all those, put in brand new mobile homes, that one, that one supposedly would be some summers, but this one, uh, eighteen units.
Eighteen, and they're already, half of them is already intacted.
So how does the city make any, I mean, I know we're going to provide them if you, if you voted in, you know.
Well, if they get lower.
How much taxes you get off there?
Whatever, I, that could be answered.
Right, I mean.
Again.
What's on the other side of it?
They're getting new buildings out there.
They built a roofing building.
You're right, probably, no, old town, great entire, yeah.
Some trade park out there, yeah.
But as far as amount of taxes, I don't, I don't have a clue of what that is.
I mean, eighteen units?
I mean, I mean, you look at, I'll use my home for instance, as an example, my taxes this past year, six hundred dollars, including city county and, and school. And the city's portion was probably two hundred dollars.
I just think it's county. I think you have to personally have to. Any other discussions? I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
I second.
All those in favor?
I don't know.
All those opposed?
I'm thinking about you.
And that's the first read you got, yes? Um, all right.
Um, I'd like to start off by, um, following up what you said, Dr. Wallace, I'd like to commend Sheriff Purnell, um, on the several drug busts he's had throughout the county. And I want to follow up with this, um, on September the sixth, I had the opportunity to meet with Glenn, Jack, David, and, um, Keith in the corner, and, um, at that time, we talked about the motels that I've been speaking about for the last. About a week, two weeks later, Glenn told me to head into the ship, just a listener, and tonight, do you have any information, five months later? None. So if the county can do it with a new sheriff, I know we can partner with the owners and get something done.
If you're under the font, I'd be glad to tell you, I, I need with sheriff, um, two to three times a week, and what we have done, realized is that we, we do not have the resources, dollars, sales to, to do what we need to do. I have assigned two people to that fastport unit, has been working with three people that sheriff has, and everything that, that the sheriff has done, our folks have been there too. We've got, uh, problems that we're working on in the city, and that was one of the big things that me and sheriff talked about, we don't want to go, we don't want to put the folks on the fastports, and they spend all the time in the county. So we've, we've got numerous targets here in the city, and that's one of them, and, uh, we're, we're actively working on it, and we're actively working with the sheriff on this.
Um, just to follow up, we had an overdose day, um, in the county at the motel on exit one eighty one Saturday, so it just goes to show you that it's an eyesore in our community, not only here, but also in our neighborhood.
It's everywhere, all that stuff, laced with fentanyl, you know.
The day it happened, the seven getting busted, I had three or four people call me, and that's the first thing I asked, is, you know, what can we do about the motels, because they know what's going on. So I just appreciate you, you know, trying to work with Purnell and, you know, getting something done on that end, um, and that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
I think you'll see, hopefully, we'll see some things that we've been trying to get done, get done, Coach, it seems like we've got a, a good relationship working.
Well, one more thing while you're talking about that, um, I would like to see us get our K nine unit back started.
Well, we're working on that.
Lada Lampu, they've got a, a dog that was donated to them, so, I mean, the city of Dillon needs to have that.
And we, we talked about that, we just got to find the, the person that wants to do that.
Okay.
And in fact, I think Stig and my friends, y'all, with the line helping us with the grant for that, so.
Well, we don't necessarily have to wait for a grant, you know, we, we got the money and the budget to go ahead and pursue that, and I hope that we will soon. That's all I have to go.
Okay, okay.
I've got a few things, um, on a positive note, um, I was happy to see the Wellness Center on the, I guess, the daily users.
Oh, yeah.
Or about, well, about fifteen percent.
Daily users have been.
And you drank one up.
Yeah, daily, daily users have been outstanding, and, I mean, come in, knock yourself in the lips, basketball, because there hasn't been a lot of revenue generated from rental that we use. Because there hasn't been a lot of revenue generated from rentals that we use, that we do.
I was happy to see.
The daily users, what's, what, 85%?
85, what, 20%.
Yeah.
On the other hand, and reiterate what Council Wallace said. On the golf course, you have nine areas that were in the neighborhood of 85 to 380%. And that's, that's pretty impressive. What kind of extra revenue do we pull in on the coverage?
I can tell you, and I looked at it last week, started messing with it. And just looking, and I keep a monthly total since the day that we started, of what our revenue is for each one. From 2016, this is a calendar year by the way, from 2016 through the end of December of 2020. 2016, we were averaging $14,000 a month in revenue. Now, that's, that's not counting the county's definition value, but that's just what we bring in as far as play goes. In 2016, we were averaging $14,000 a month. 2020, we're averaging right at $20,000 a month. We saw a big shift beginning with COVID, to be honest with you. But also saw, we made some, there were some changes made to the golf course and things were running smoother and I think that helps a lot. But I think COVID, that was one of the things that people were allowed to do and it's caught on them. We had a good number of outside users, when I say outside users. People out of North Carolina, Marlboro County, Bingham County, Chesterfield County coming and using our golf course. And that's a good thing. Could we do better? Surely could. But this is the best 12 months that we've ever had of 2020, the whole month, the whole year of 2020.
Sure.
This is the 12 months.
Other things I have. On code enforcement, Janet, I was looking at that Department 18. And I noticed, now you had, I think you had mentioned before publications and legal ads. What causes us to be so far above budget in that area?
Because you never know what you're gonna advertise, what comes up.
Okay.
Condemned properties being.
I got you.
How many we have and having put that in the newspapers, pretty much yet, I'm on the stage on my own.
The, in the wellness center, did we have to do some extensive work in the telephones in the wellness center?
Not here lately.
Because we had it budgeted at 10,000, we're at 16 and a half.
Yeah, I'm not, I can't answer that.
I'll have to look into that.
I don't think we've done anything this year as far as injuries paid.
And the other question I had, I ordered a silver on Department 46, that you had contractual AMV cloud.
AMV is cloud, that's pay online.
I got you. The only question I have, I just didn't understand what that was.
If you look in some of our expenses over there as well, I think I noticed today, it costs us, have we spent 12,000, 15,000? And setting in debit cards without charging a fee, and that's what we have to take advantage of. So I mean, there's costs of doing that that we don't turn back over to the user.
Now, the, the new F20 LT drive assembly that we had to replace, where was that located at, Harvey?
That's it, that clarifier, it's 1970 model. Explain to them what a clarifier is. That's where it separates the solids and lets the clear water come off the top until it's discharged. And the arm continues spins, it's your box going out in the bottom part of it.
All right, that's all I got, Doug. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, do the Howard department, that, nobody probably doing it right now. In the ditch, it's going to be wide, when the bellman runs it all day, all the time. You digging them potholes out on the side of the road?
We're going through now, and if it ever stopped raining, help you. You know, hopefully to dry out and try to fix some of those things. I gave one bird today that you get, I don't think it was, I think that was on Carolina Avenue, the one I gave.
Did Howard, did Howard, did Howard?
You got it, Allen.
Did I call Allen? David, I appreciate the work you've done over there in that open and apartment on 31. That they sent the city, sent the trouble to the walk, and I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Don't think, Glenn, if we ever looked into getting a light down here at Commerce and 301.
Not in the city.
It's not in the city, okay. I just noticed it was very hard when I was coming tonight, it's like.
I mean, we can do it, I mean, good, just not.
Got you. I just wonder, I mean, we could, I mean. It's really dark right there as far as turning, finding, locating that road, so maybe look into that.
Okay.
Huh?
Grant the bullet for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could do that.
But we can, I mean, again, it's not in the city, if you want to spend, I don't know what the cost is for a strip light, maybe. 18 dollars a light or something, it's not a lot.
Right.
But it's not in the city.
Got you. Oh, man.
That's all I got.
I have it.
You good?
Is there any way we can get grant money to run from where you finished that project on Martha Luther King up to Main Street?
Jeff?
Change our lighting?
We're talking about lighting?
Yeah, so it'll run.
The only thing about the lighting, the only thing about the lighting, the grant didn't pay for that, did it? The lighting, because we had to come out of pocket, 150 something thousand.
159, I think.
Oh.
Was that a Florida?
I think that's called.
There was, we had to own it. They wouldn't let Duke own those, those light fixtures.
So you had to literally buy all the light fixtures?
Yes.
With the radio, yeah.
But everything else brought up to the light, the wiring, all that was included in the project?
Yes.
Could you bring something to us to show what it would do to continue that sidewalk and lighting up to Main Street? Because it really looks good, but it's kind of dark until you get down to that point and then it's really light.
And you got. Yeah, we can get them to look and see what was entailed. Now, many years ago, probably 20 years ago, we ran sidewalk from J.B. Martin to Jackson Street.
Right.
On, on the left side of Golden Act.
Right.
And then stopped there.
Dagged across the road, yeah.
Yeah, and then go across the road to get the other portion. It may be well to look at, and we don't have to get a grant to do this, to get Duke to walk away from what we have in place now. From J.B. Martin to Jackson Street, see if they would put in lights.
LED lighting there. Right, yeah, that'd be nice.
And they commented that that, we don't want to own it, but under that grant they put on it, that was what it was. You already got sidewalk there, just add lights to that side of the street.
Yeah.
Consider what that cost would be. We'll find that out. And that's it. And then maybe take it, not only to J.B. Martin, then do it in faith and take it up to Main Street.
Especially if they're gonna roll that renovation.
Yeah, it was, the site plans, they had submitted site plans. I think Bert Hardy had looked at them last week or week before. So that project is starting to roll. I had told you last month that there were discussions that they wanted to have to the council, Jack is talking to their party. I think they're gonna present something next month. J.B. Martin family that.
He didn't say when, he said he would get it drawn up. We're gonna have to, uh, move it into the old area.
Yeah, it's just to do, give Florence Housing Authority, let them be the lead on this, it won't cost the city anything.
We don't have a housing authority, Florence has agreed, we do a diligence.
Yeah.
And it's got, oh, in our main concern, what, Food Line Middle down the city, we said that would not be part.
And I've had a few people that mentioned, if we could in the future, to have a project on First Avenue.
Cover the ditches.
Yeah, that and the lighting down for Food Line and Sidewalk all the way. It's straight shot, no curve.
The only issue with that one, and they looked at that, is those big canals. And we, as we spoke many times before about canals and tiles, open canal holds more water than a tile one does. And that's where the sidewalk would be, would be above those canals.
So maybe.
I've never seen those canals full of water. Oh, I have.
Really?
Yes. Yes.
You know, that water bottle digs up down there. When they're doing this research, make sure they put a lot of emphasis at the end of that First Avenue there, Food Line. And see what we can do in that area to alleviate a lot of that pressure on our water running. And maybe there's something we can do with the ditches.
These birds another way. Well, that, all that water comes down to.
First Avenue is a mess.
To old furniture store warehouse, I mean, Dillon veneer. Yeah, passed it to the old, what was that? One of your competitors. Coaches Hardware Store. And it cuts in at the side hit and goes up under 301 to the list of lanes and to the ponds. That's where all that water goes, that is ready. Oh, it's my competitor. That was four.
Yeah.
All right. Can I get a motion to go into the executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All those in favor? Thank y'all.